Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
Finances I want to address, we have a consent agenda, policies, superintendent's report, administrative report, committee's report, chair's report, and FYI. I do need to add in a deviation between three and four. Is that we do have to have a discussion and executive session that's in context, I mean contracts, in item six of the consent agenda for nominations. So that would be the order with the...
We're going to go into executive session after finance?
We're not going to executive session after finance. For contract discussions on the nominees in item four.
Do you have a motion to accept that?
Yes, we need to add two agendas, just to add to the agenda. Now, one of the things I found out in all this, that brought it through, we're small, we're less than the number, and so you may or may not have to have a second to that. But we can take it if you wanted, if not, we don't have to have a second along that line. So we'll get to be more efficient as we move on and try to do things out there. So with that, then we have opening meetings for public comments. Are there any comments on...
Is anybody in the waiting room?
And no public comments on it, okay. Open board seats. We had a board member that has become ill and is no longer able to attend board meetings. I got an email on. And then we have a board member seat open for, that was the Woodford seat, and now we have seat open for, that we are in Powell. And so the only thing that I got to say is that we needed to appeal to the public that we need representation from Woodford area on the Mount Anthony School Board, and we need representation from Powell on the Mount Anthony School Board. And so if you have a name of someone that would like to be considered, please forward their name on to the central office area or contact.
They can contact you or they can...
They can contact me if you have an email for that. So that's all I have to say about that right now. Okay, so the next item is on the finance. We had a treasurer's report, and I didn't print all out. So we need to accept it.
I meant that we accept the treasurer's report?
If that moves. Okay, are there any discussions concerning the treasurer's report? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone exclaiming? Anyone opposed? None, okay, thank you. The next area is that I ask that we now, since we're in this new area here, I'm trying to see how we need it to do that, to play out for an executive session, and so...
I'm gonna, because Richard and Cat TV have joined us, that's why I will move them to a breakout room and ask the other people to, on board members to leave, and then...
We'll be expecting the actual action when we come back.
Yes. We'll be up in the store.
Jim, did the donations to the sustainability class get accepted?
No.
I can't hear.
I don't believe so.
Did we move the donations?
No, they haven't done the consent agenda.
It's under finance.
Yeah.
Donation, you...
Yes, can I move that?
Yes.
Can I move it now?
What was it?
Donation, a donation to the fund, so the sustainability.
Eighty dollars.
Eighty dollars for the sustainability class.
Yes. Session with clarification of our consummers with the nomination format, and so we will allow us to proceed on with the consent agenda. So can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as guided by the superintendent's statement?
So moved.
Move. And second, any comments concerning the consent agenda? No discussion. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone exclaiming? Anyone opposed? None, okay, thank you. The next item is a policy. We have no meetings since the last meeting that we have, and we actually postponed off August, and then September, we can get one in, but maybe September 12th, maybe you'll be able to get one in there then. We just wanted to make sure. So with that, we'll go to the superintendent's report.
Hey, everyone, welcome to our new location. I'll speak to that in a minute, but first, since you decided to join us, then I'll decide to introduce you. This is Holly Anderson. She is the SBSU new director of operation, finance, well, it's not again, facilities and operations, and those of you who are on the SCU board, you know that we split the responsibilities that Renee Gordon was doing very well, but very concerned about the longevity of doing all of that. So I'll put, since you decided to come, I'm going to put you on the spot and let you get a quick little bio of what, of who Holly Anderson is and what brought you here. It'll be a warm-up to the SCU meeting.
That's excellent, and thank you much, thank you so much for having me. So my name is Holly Anderson. I most recently spent the last 13 years at Bennington College, running all their construction projects, all their capital expenditure, capital projects. And my bachelor's degrees in construction management and product engineering, and I've spent 23, 24 years on construction sites in supervisory and managing roles. So I very much look forward to working at the SBSU and keeping our buildings clean and efficient.
You got a job, how many weeks left?
This is beginning of five, so I'm pretty green. Staff and I were on the board of the Bennington Early Childhood Center together, and we worked together in building, purchasing the building, renovating the building, and doing a deep entry retrofit where we switched out all the HP systems, insulated, put in lighting. So she knows I'm a lot of diesel knowledge.
Well, thank you. It is...
I'm sure Renee's thrilled to have you. How great, Renee?
More than thrilled, thank you.
Our staff returned on Monday, our students returned today, some of them, not all the high school is there yet. It's on Monday and Tuesday, we traditionally do the big welcome back at the high school, and our community partners in the gymnasium, and keynote speaker in the auditorium, and some type of reception in between before we send everyone back off to their buildings. That stopped when COVID hit, you know, we're not going to gather 600-plus people into the auditorium. So last year, maybe we launched, call it the central office bus tour, and we had, you know, a banner and pop-up tents and tables, and all the giveaway prizes and handouts that we have for staff at opening day was all part of this mobile opening day. So we toured half the schools on Monday and the other half on Tuesday. We did it again this year. We could have probably physically gathered because COVID is not, you know, impacting as it was two years ago, but since COVID started, we've grown, we've gained another school district that puts our staffing level, you know, over 800 individuals to, we wouldn't be able to bring everybody in one location at once. So we are, so we did the bus tour again this year. It's very well received, but I do feel that it lacks a little of that opening day charge that we get when we all get together, and we also lose the mingling of schools that, like you get to see teachers from the other buildings, that you don't get that opportunity. So we're working on maybe a different option for next year, but we'll see, we're going to, you know, start that planning soon, actually, for the following year. So we're in this new conference room here, right off of downtown Bennington, and major moves always have some snacks, right? We probably, we took on a lot. Me moving to a new building, it wasn't just the move, and the move was delayed, the movers gave us a date that was a little later than we had hoped, and you're at the mercy of when movers are available. But at the same time, you know, moving to here changed our phone system, we also were migrating to a new email platform. So of course, you know, they were stacked with technology. We put a disclaimer up on our, an alert up on our website, letting people know, we know that you're having trouble trying to call into us, and that emails are getting bounced back. And though a lot of those problems have been solved, they still haven't. I understand the high school is still having some email challenges, and I even had one that I sent to principal Payne, today bounced back to me. And I think I discovered what the problem is there. It was my computer automatically went to your apps account, which doesn't exist anymore because it's using the builder directly, so the tech is in process of purging those older accounts. On top of that, a major part that we needed for the phone, new phone system, got back ordered, well, surprise, you know, supply chain issues, so that actually didn't arrive to the 22nd of August. So our front desk personnel were taking all phone calls from, like, all schools were coming here, and then they had to direct them. We got a kind of a temporary pass that allowed you to, you know, if you want to talk to Shastri Elementary School, press five, you know, but still, it was not, you couldn't directly call the school, and if you, and there was a time that you couldn't even email for people, and then there were times that email was working, but not if you were on your phone, if you're on your phone, somebody could not leave an email on your phone, it was, it was all kinds of nightmares, but I mentioned schools opening in like two weeks. At the same time, this new phone system, we find it does not support our old fax machines, so fax, you know, so emails have come from phone calls, and luckily, you know, we're relying on cell phones for, at one point, fax machines, because our brand, our copier contract kind of expired at the same time with one with a new vendor, different copy, upgraded copiers, these copiers are also going to be our fax machines, but they're just now coming online, they're not all online. Let's see, what else? Oh, you know, yeah, fax machines, cell phone, copiers, phone system, transition to the email platform, all within, you know, weeks of the start of school. And I know there's a lot of frustration out there, but I think the end result is going to be wonderful. We have SBSU employees in a building that's safe, healthy, all together on the same floor. It is completely accessible, the bathrooms are completely accessible, and that was not the case where we were before. So I do think that it will be worth it in the end, but I do want to acknowledge publicly that I know who have had problems, and I'm sure that our principals have heard it from parents, you know, so it's been, it's been, I want to acknowledge, but it's our time, I want to thank everybody for their patience, and I want to thank our technology department who is just, they haven't caught a break, they've been going straight out, and Holly's been from Intuit from day one. The move wouldn't happen, wouldn't have happened without Renee Gordon was here, so there's a real long list of people to thank. We are going to have planned an open house and tour day. You're sitting in the most completed, nicest looking part of project right now. We go behind the curtain, you know, it's really not ready for public viewing, there's still some things that are, that need to be attended to, but I'm very proud of who I work with and what those people, the people that I work with and what they've done to get us to this point, and it will be a great asset for the school, and as you mentioned, a great asset for professional learning, we do a lot of that. We now have two conference rooms that we can bring staff in at a central location that is comfortable, no one really likes to do professional learning in an environment that is either too cold or too hot, and, you know, those are some of the issues we had in our other building. It's on this, he and I were on the same heating pipe, even though our offices were opposite ends of the building, and I'm running my air conditioner in the winter to stay cool to so hot, and he's got his winter coat on in his office, that's, that's the type of stuff that we're dealing with, you know, if you ever went to basement of the building, we shouldn't have been using that part of the building a long time ago, so I do, I do think, you know, it will be worth it. So thank you to everybody for your patience, and I commend our principals and our HR department for how many people that they onboarded this school year. You know, the number sounds frightening, like, wait a minute, 105 people, and so what's going on here? Is everybody leaving? Well, we always hover in the eight, nine, 10% range for turnover, which is low for educational institutions, which nationally is close to 25%. So, you know, these are difficult jobs, difficult positions sometimes to fill, but I think, you know, our staff, your staff, has done a great job to get these positions filled, but it's all, everything else is going on to still maintain that vision, so thank you to everyone there.
Did anybody have any questions? But, you know, that's what I want to make is sure.
Do we have any open vacancies still?
I'm sure we do. Nick, are you still there?
I am here, yes.
Do you have a quick number of, you know, do you want to, maybe you or we have...
I do not have a quick number I could give. I just, I haven't compiled something with the number of different buildings and different...
That's okay, I just wondered.
But yeah, the answer is yes, we're continuing to post for and look, look to fill a number of opens.
Yeah, we have, I don't think we're as bad as I hear some of the national stories, but yeah, there are openings, and I'm sure our principals can, they know where their openings are, so.
All right, thank you, Jim. This particular time, next one is, we have a minute, and a report from the high school and the middle school, who wants to go first? I mean, the high school is down, but I'm saying we don't have to be...
First we go.
I'll defer to the senior administrator. No, just, just the background. No, thank you. So hello, everyone, good to see you all again. I wanted to start, Jim did a similar thing, I want to start out with some thank yous. The, you know, the middle school is kind of known as the bright shiny new building, and, you know, it's almost 20 years old now, and I got to see the maintenance crew, you know, Tony Darlene and, you know, her, their whole crew does an amazing job, and when you come walking in the building, I mean, it looks, it looks like it's very new still. It's beautiful, it's shiny, it's sparkling, it's clean, and is that how you're going to start your report?
No.
So I, it's, you know, I really, I thank them, they navigate so much activity that we have at the building, it is that nice, you know, beautiful school, it gets a lot of use through the summer, and they work very hard with me to kind of navigate it all and make sure it looks beautiful, so I want to thank them. Abbey Group is also a house owner of our building, they, you know, work...
Chris, I want to thank for not sending me a picture of thermostat on the second floor today.
Well, I hear that, you know, there may be, there may be some relief in sight, so I...
That was a tradition that the former principal would send to me.
I kept it going last year.
And it is, it is a brutal having drop on the second floor.
It is, yeah, I mean, we can get up into the mid 90s in a few classrooms when, you know, when people are teaching in the building, so that's, you know, put a little plug in for that, for the air conditioning project, again.
But Holly Anderson and Renee Gordon are going to make sure it gets air conditioned.
That would be wonderful, there would be some happy staff there, for sure. Abbey Group, another thank you, Maureen O'Neil and her crew, they do an amazing job, they not only, you know, work at, doing their thing for the middle school, but for the whole district, and again, they just, they serve a lot of schools, a lot of families, and they do great work. And then, like I said, a number of working group curriculum committees, you know, teachers working in the building to plan in-service days and to get ready for school, I want to thank all of them, and also my secretaries, you know, navigating the new master schedule and my vision for the new master schedule and all, you know, the changes throughout what we've been working on for about eight to nine months, getting it to where it is now, and I'm really proud of it, we've implemented some changes, and they've bared with me through it all. My admin team, Tony Lee, Jen Austin, I'm going to throw Don Campbell, associate director of student services, as part of the team, they just, they problem solve with me, and I appreciate all of them, so I just want to say those thank yous. If I'm forgetting something, I'm extremely sorry, but I just wanted to say those thank yous. Our in-service days, I felt were very productive, and I was very proud of the staff that did all that work to plan them with me. We continued by cultivating community initiative of really setting clear expectations with students, practicing those expectations, setting norms, but we had some, with a series of stations, we had stations on those, PBIS, our behavior system, we did a station on instructional engagement, and then I did a station on our FTSS manual and our FTSS system, very well received by a lot of staff members, and I thought it was very positive, and I, they worked so hard to not only plan it, but the people participating in it really engaged and really came in ready for the work. We also had a, you know, a professional learning opportunity on restorative circles, I'm sure really working hard, focus on restorative practices at the middle school, of course, in the last year into this year, and so at a future meeting, I can report a little bit more out about some specific changes and things we're doing around restorative practices. And we also had our CAST keynote, which oversees our work on universal UDL, universal design for learning, which gives all students access to classes and lesson planning. So those are all things that I'm just kind of planning this year, and we will certainly come back to and talk about more throughout the school year, some big topics at the middle school. Our opening days were very, our opening days, our opening day today, I thought was very positive, we were able to bring grade level teams back into the gymnasium and have our grade level assemblies led by the man himself, Tony Lee, and they were, you know, the kids were great, it was just nice to be able, I certainly won't say that, you know, we're back to normal, because, well, you know, I don't know that we're ever going to be able to make that statement, but there did, I felt a little bit more of a sense of normalcy to the start of school, and that was, that was comforting. Another thing that was really nice to see today is all those in-service things where we really drive home the cultivating community, the building expectations, I saw teachers out in the hallways as soon as practicing those things, really taking what we talked about and learned about in the professional learning activities, and really trying to lay that foundation for a productive school year. So that was, that was nice to see, and it's just great to see the students in the building. I mean, you know, it's, those are the interactions that are fun, just having those conversations with silly middle schoolers and just enjoying life a little bit. So that's all the positive stuff. I did want to just, to Mr. Paul Flynn's statement about hiring, I, you know, I don't want to sugarcoat it, hiring has been a challenge, we had a, you know, worked very hard throughout the summer to fill some positions, I had three resignations in the mid to end of August, so that, you know, that throws a curveball and, you know, takes work to figure out how to, how to staff the building effectively. I think that I put together some good plans, I'd reached out to a couple retired teachers who have graciously accepted to come in and, and work with us through the first trimester. Pat Conway has agreed to come in and teach some math for me, it's a little bit of a combination of doing some days a week, and back home with substitute teachers, but I'm feeling really good that she's there to hold on the fort plan and help carry that. And I also had Diane Moore from the high school recent February, who's agreed to come in and work with us for the first trimester to teach seventh grade science. So I'm very, very appreciative to them, and I'm also very appreciative of some of the substitute teachers that have agreed to come in, not like on a consistent basis to help us until, you know, we're staying committed to the hiring, but, you know, we need candidates to interview, is the reality. So I'm very interested in working with district leadership and, you know, whomever can help with that and trying to figure out plans to recruit and retain teaching candidates, something that we could talk about in the future. I also have, so I currently have three math teacher openings out of my seven teacher math department, I have one science teacher opening out of my seven science teacher, science department, and I have a literacy coach opening right now. Those are the, those are the most pressing openings that I have in the building that, you know, deal with a person in front of a group of students. So that's all I have for tonight, and I look forward to working with you all throughout the year.
Okay, well, thank you, everybody. We've wasted time on the, on the wrong, I think you did a good job of everything we think. Why don't we have Mr. Payne, high school.
How much time do I have?
Oh, I'll give you two minutes.
I'll do this quickly. So it's important to thank folks, especially for the staff that works with you over the summer, because a lot of work is done during the summer, so I want to say thank you to Christina Gaboris, who's my administrative assistant, my office staff that worked really hard, had to do some substituting in there as well, the studians, led by Tony Donofeu, did a very nice job, kept them very busy this summer, and encourage folks to visit. I think you guys see some changes visually as you walk around the building. It's really nice to have a full admin team this year, you know, so we met Kelsey Mizell earlier in the evening, Jeremy Neal's with me, Dawn's with me, Nancy Vanderbilt returns, it's been just really nice to have that full team and full time, so I feel like we're one step ahead of that. We had freshman orientation last week, we had good attendance, we had quite a few parents out, it was a nice sweltering evening in the auditorium, and folks were very positive, it was great to see folks. We had in-service, like Chris mentioned, Monday and Tuesday, I feel like it was good energy, we kept them moving, faculty are a lot like students, you got to give them activities, you got to keep them moving, you got to see them occasionally, so that went very nicely. I am in a different situation, and Chris and I am grateful for the tradition, today was first day of school for the high school, but only the ninth grade attends, and so it's, it's not the school-based schedule, they get a little preview of some classes, they get a tour of the tech center, have a class meeting, lunch, another couple of short classes, I think it helps, especially for the ninth graders coming in, big building, navigating three floors, I think they appreciate it, they're going to be in for a little culture shock when the, you know, the older kids arrive tomorrow, but that'll be all right, we'll work that out. I want to talk a little bit about staffing as well, I, like Chris, have had a, it's been a difficult hiring period, this is my 20th year of being a building administrator, and I have never seen it so ruthless. Postings go up, you know, you get candidates, people not even showing up for interviews, people having multiple offers before you can get there. We've been looking for science teachers since December, because I had, unfortunately, I lost a member of my staff to cancer, and we've been unsuccessful, so I'm going to start the school year, much like Chris had a deficit, I have six science teacher in a department that usually has 10. That has a ripple effect, you offer your core subjects, but you don't offer electives, which then impacts other departments, because I have to pick that up. I've talked to my colleagues in the Southwest Tech, they're in a similar situation, they haven't been able to fill, and that has a consequence, it's coming back to our building having to be supervised, so it's just been very challenging. I lost the math teacher yesterday, came to see me and say that they have taken a position, and there's a wide variety of reasons. On my good days, I'm optimistic, I think I'm going to get into the teacher training business and just start grabbing kids right out of college and give them the real experience. On my pessimistic, I'm a little concerned that... While my pessimistic, I'm a little concerned that fewer kids are entering the profession, fewer people are wanting to do the work. And that means that education is going to have to look different as we go forward. So I, I too, like Chris, am looking forward to gathering in a bigger group and starting to think creatively about how we're going to meet the needs of our kids. Because I think, I think this is not a return to normal and everything will be fine. I think, I think it's going to be different. And I'm really looking forward to trying to figure out how to crack the code and get kids what they need. Or, I probably wasn't as rainbow and sunshine today, right?
Well, I, I produce the rules, you'd never have a board meeting on the first day of school back. Because it's a long, it's a very long day for principals today, very long. Make voices for, for Jim.
Well, I, I just have a comment. I did go to the select board meeting and asked them to build some middle income housing.
I appreciate that. And my friends are tired of me badgering them about apartments.
We did lose some candidates, Jack, you from Coop's first day of trouble finding housing.
Yeah.
So that was a, that was an assignment to say to you.
I, I did that and I will keep not be on that door, but I do know that 40 units are going up on Herbert Hill.
I saw that, yeah.
And, and I don't know what's happening with the old Ben Hyatt, but I don't, I wouldn't be hopeful, but it's just me. But they, they're, they've heard it and, and they said it's coming. But, you know, that's today and coming could be two years from now, so.
So I want to thank you for pulling me up on that bus.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. So I'm going to move on with the committee's reports if we have any out there. I wanted this board to be a, a board of committees to work, both committee chair and committee vice chair along that line. And so it's late for everybody, but I wanted to make sure that, I'll start, it's a policy for me. We didn't have one in this month, so there's, there's no report for that. We had a finance, we had no finance committee tonight.
No, I did create a paper today about the need to set their rhythm right now for them to set one up. So I will be, you know, Amy, I think is that's the procedure to ask the two to call the.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right, because then she will, she will survey the.
To see that one.
Availability.
Okay, so I didn't sign it this evening, but I will sign it tomorrow.
Really, I just early, I just wanted to say we, we won't forget and I'll be pulling on. So we had egg and land and food service, meat, clothing.
I'm not sure if we want it, is that, okay, so I can do it, I can ask.
I was trying to credit it all. So. Add food service, we didn't have a meeting along that line. So we'll be trying to prepare something along that line. So the next thing to add is education and. And do you have anything you want to say that you decided you have a meeting today?
We had a meeting today and we are kind of just getting our feet wet and coming together. And we have some tasks and to-do lists that were assigned out. And we'll be setting up another meeting for probably October.
Thank you. I want to have committee's continuous of work and put things together and try to massage things because we want to be a board of committees to work it right along with the management years ago. And the community to try to resolve the issues and keep our board meetings down to the minimum in terms of time. Under the chairs report, I just wanted to remind everybody and myself, which I hadn't signed up there at the annual school board meeting, that I keep forgetting to sign up. So actually, if you wanted to go to the annual school board meeting, you can just send a note to Amy. You can go online and register, but you can send a note to Amy that says, I want to go. And she'll take care of all the expenses. It's going to come back to her anyway.
Why is it? So do you, do you register and then tell Amy or you just tell Amy and she registers you?
It's, it's happened both ways. Can, you know, some make their own reservation and then submit reimbursement or somehow maybe.
Right.
Why don't we just all call, send an email to Amy and says, I want to go and attend the annual school board meeting, which is October. I had it on my, I got it on my phone, if you wanted to know the date.
October 20th and 21st.
Yes, but you, you had to go up to 19th because the, the morning starts at eight o'clock in the morning.
Right, so it's the night, it's the 20th and the 21st, but you can go up the night of the 19th, which is. And it's, I recommend. Yeah, I really recommend it for, for all board members, student team and administration as much as possible. And we have a lot of different people presenting, Chris presented, like you yourself.
And if, if you sign up before, the, the first cutoff date was August 23rd. And, and that discounted, you know, a hundred dollars. But the next cutoff is on, excuse me, September 14th. So sign up before September 14th, otherwise it costs another $50.
All right, so what I want to do is, is point out and if you sign up, that's, that's great. The next thing is we have a district school board meeting that is on line in town and that's the 8.
8, September 8th.
September the 8th is a, of the VSA, VSBA board meeting, regional board meeting. And that'll be online. And so I would encourage you to participate on that and fill that out.
They have to register and send you the, the online information and it's 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM.
Okay. And then thanks, and then we have a, a revolution seminar at 12 o'clock that, that same day for the Vermont School Board Association. And you can do all of that by just going online and reging.
Yes, I'd like to just make one more comment. But I'm joining the governance committee out of the governor's office for, and it's, it's directed by the VSBA as well. And the governance means how, how do school boards conduct their meetings? I didn't know that.
Well, I, I, I have that down. You've got, got that covered. Yes, that's a governance meeting. I think you get a lot from the school board association for trying to understand all these things out there. So once you get on Susan's list and they keep sending you these things, you can just pick the ones that you want to participate in. But it's highly educational to, to be part of the school board association and that can play how we do things back here. So I, I, let's see here. In addition to that, I wanted to say that. Remind everybody about the two waiting spaces along that line. But then I also wanted to say as board members, we have a lot of learning to do. And I want this board as being the chair, I want to really be a polished and well-chan board. But I want respect from one another and I want a free reading, studying and so forth before the board. So we can have the questions answered before we get here.
Those came in today for all these board members.
Yes, and so we can be as strong as possible along that line of the board. So I, when we, when it comes to committee, this is, this is the essential work of a, where they take my old, old one here. So my time was back in 2012, 2015, so I got a new one. So we'll, we'll pass those out for everybody to have one. And thank you, Jim, for getting.
The first day of school.
Do I have to go home and pack with my mother? I'll get a, I'll give her back.
There's a lot of good information in that and we're going to be trying to discuss certain things in, under this section that will be given to all of us in terms of board chairs. Because when we go out, just to remind everybody and work as a committee, work on these committees. Just to remind me that, that. That our job really as a board is policies. And so we want to make sure that we keep things in focus based on the school policies that we have and policies that may be in place or may not be in place and understanding them. The administrative working of the school should be measured by our committees by determining how effective they are in performing their job in terms of education, finance, agriculture, or whatever in terms of how the structure is working. That's really what we want to look at and allow them to complete the job as swift and as quick as possible. And when time allows us to vote, to use the taxpayer money to support activities that they may want to have and structurally put in place to be more efficient when it comes to education of the kids, we can do that. So I just wanted to say that. And then I have a budget status report that's of an FYI. That, that's all in mind. Your district goals are on the list unless people pick out. For that, any other questions?
My name is going to bring in some warrants for people to sign before you leave.
Okay, so if I have a motion, we can adjourn. All right, then, move to the second, the holding panel. All right, and propose, I'm staying. Thank you, it's 7:15, I'm sorry for the delay.
Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.